Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of November. I'd like to welcome everyone in our council chambers and those of you who are watching us on our Electric City Television. The invocation be given by Councilmember Matt Harbin respects the flags to be laid by Councilmember John Roberts. Please rise.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us live in a free country and that we're able to have meetings like this tonight. And I pray for our military in the past and present that have helped us protect this freedom, and especially the ones in harm's way tonight protecting that freedom. I pray for our fire department, our police, and our other city staff and employees, they will make wise decisions that will represent our city well. And Lord, I pray for our community, the tragic events and deaths in our community and our community leaders over the last few weeks. I pray for their families and to comfort them during this time, and their friends, and our community as a whole, that we will deal with these losses. Lastly, I pray for our council, that we will make good decisions and wise decisions that will be pleasing to you and in your eyes. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
For the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a couple of agenda items before we get into the body of our meeting. And I'm going to ask the chief to come up and lead us in a special recognition. And also, Chief also has a swearing-in ceremony. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. To begin with, I'd like to start with a special recognition, which is going to be a promotion. I'd like to call up Trevor Brazil, engineer. Trevor, is there anyone here with you tonight? I'd like to recognize.
Yeah, my girlfriend, Kelsey Wilson.
Okay, due to her recent retirement, we've got a vacancy in the sergeant position. We started one of the last meetings. It was an engineer position, sergeant position, then it'll be a lieutenant position. I'll give you a little history on Trevor. He came to the fire department November 26, 2007, was promoted to engineer November 26, 2010. And he had to be there three years, so that was to the day he made engineer. Trevor's a lieutenant with the Honey Path Fire Department, captain with the Creightonville Fire Department. So I think he likes being a fireman. He's also on our honor guard, as you can see by his uniform. He was a top candidate in our sergeant promotional process, which included a very competitive process of written a test, interview, and resume. He's completed all his requirements to be promoted to the rank of sergeant. And Trevor, on behalf of the City of Anderson and Anderson Fire Department, I'd like to congratulate you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, I'd like to call up Ron Garrish. We have a swearing-in tonight. Firefighter Ron Garrish is a graduate of Putnam High School in Putnam, Connecticut. He is a lieutenant with Williford Fire Department. They can't get enough of firefighting. He previously worked with MedShore as an EMT, and in September, he completed recruit school at the South Carolina Fire Academy and graduated with the Order of the Maltese. That's the highest award that they give at the fire academy. And while he was there, he received all of his necessary courses he needed, and he has successfully completed his probationary period and is qualified to be sworn in as an Anderson City firefighter. Ron, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Ron Garrish.
Aye, Ron Garrish.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
Do my duty.
As an Anderson City firefighter.
As an Anderson City firefighter.
To the best of my ability. To serve my commanding officers.
Serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
To uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
State of South Carolina.
State of South Carolina.
And the city of Anderson.
And the city of Anderson.
So have me guide.
So have me guide.
Tonight, we have a special presentation in regards to Anderson University. We'll have a public hearing on this matter. And the public hearing is in regard to the South Carolina Job Economic Development Authority in reference to revenue bonds by Anderson University. And with Anderson University, for Anderson University tonight, we have Dane Slaughter, who's going to lead the presentation, and also, we have Kathleen McKinney, who's here also to give any type of some financial discussion on the matter. Dane?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
With the type of business that I'm in, we currently have nothing to do with this bond, but I'd like to recuse myself from this public meeting and also, item one in new business when we meet on, vote on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Harbin. Let the minutes recognize that Mr. Harbin has recused himself from the public meeting and item one in new business.
Thank you.
Mr. Slaughter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, city staff, for all the preparation for tonight. Again, my name is Dane Slaughter. I'm the Associate Vice President at Anderson University for Facilities. And I come here tonight to share with you some very excellent information about Anderson University in the future. First of all, just a little background, recently, Anderson University was named the number-one up-and-coming regional college in the South for its rapid growth and for quality of innovation. This fall, we welcomed our largest freshman class in the history of the institution, over 650 freshmen, to our campus. We now have a population on campus in beds of right at 1,400. And we also just recently announced we've topped 3,100 in enrollment at the school for the first time in the history of the school, over 3,000 students. We come to unite for these revenue bonds, and the purpose of them are multifold, as we can go into and your paperwork shows, but one of the great assets we're fixing to start on at the university is the G. Ross Anderson Student Center, and that's one of the needs for these bonds. The Student Center will be named in honor of the United States District Court Judge G. Ross Anderson, a native Andersonian here. And just a few things about the Student Center. Number one, it's an 80,000-plus square foot building. We're hoping to start on construction sometime in next year. The estimated cost of the building, total cost, will exceed $15 million. As part of that building, there will be a new dining hall. If you've never been to Anderson, you eat in a 1911 dining hall. We are in great need of a new one, and that's all incorporated into the venue. If you look on the screen in front of you in these photographs down here on the left, you'll see two perspectives on the building, the proposed building. If you also look on the screen above you, I'll also click through a few here. There's one vantage point of it showing you the size and scope of this building. If you're married with campus, this building will go basically where the intermural field and the softball field is currently. I'll get into that in a second. We're relocating those venues down to the athletic campus. So there's a few shots for you to look at there on the screen in front of you and down here. There's a bird's-eye view there from kind of the avenue gymnasium looking back to the north. In this building, there will be not only the dining hall I mentioned already, but a banquet hall setting several hundred individuals, also a 400-seat auditorium and movie theater. The campus bookstore will be located there, as well as two other dining venues. Also, we'll have a group fitness room, a wellness center, student development offices, student activities offices, and work rooms for our student activities and clubs. We'll also have a campus safety center will be relocated to this new Student Center. We also have a student success tutoring and testing center to help our students in their academic endeavors, as well as a career services center to help our students find jobs, both locally and abroad. So that's a little bit about our Student Center. Again, we're hoping to break ground sometime next year on that. One of the needs for these bonds to help fuel the growth of our university. Let me switch it up here. In order to build this building, we have to, I mentioned relocate, a softball stadium as well as tennis courts. If you look in the upper left-hand corner of that picture there on the screen, as well as the upper left-hand corner down here, if you come down later to check it out, we're going to be building a tennis center and a recreational pool. That's actually under construction right now. We had this hearing on that quite a while back on the zoning, if you recall, to allow us to build those. We're building eight of the 12 tennis courts right now. And there'll be a pool house and a tennis center as well, that little white building just to the lower left-hand corner where the tennis courts are. I don't have an electronic copy of this accessible to me, but if you come down after the meeting, you're welcome to look at a kind of a bird's-eye view of the tennis building along with the tennis courts. Okay? For everybody else's benefit, sorry for how small it is. It's the largest one I have. And so we have to build those in order to make room for the students that are on the main campus. In addition to that, we also have a softball stadium. And here's another picture. Again, you're welcome to see this afterwards. It's going to be a synthetic turf field along with over 250 seats, stadium seats, a clubhouse, press box area, as well as another parking area to add to our campus down there. So it's going to be a state-of-the-art center, and that's under construction right now. And that's further along the tennis right now, actually, out there. The combination cost of the tennis pool and softball stadium and all the civil work going on out there is right at $5 million. That's also mentioned in your paperwork. You've got to understand also that as part of the tennis and pool and softball, if you look at the areas where the throwing events eventually will be someday for the field events, you notice the hammer throw and the javelin kind of out to the right-hand side, upper right-hand side of that drawing there. That area is also part of the civil development that's going on out at the athletic campus. The total is 16.8 acres. So this is a very large site. It's not just a softball field and a few tennis courts. It's two buildings and an awful lot of site work. So I stand ready for questions or comments related to the construction of these venues. There's obviously more going on with the bonds than just that. It's all mentioned in your paperwork, but these are the big items for the future. The Student Center, G. Ross Anderson Student Center, as well as the athletic campus development. That's a necessary part of that. So I guess I'll turn it over now to any questions.
Do they have any questions for Mr. Slaughter?
Just so I can orientate myself, the retention pond on the right, that's the big retention pond on Gossett Street right there.
There actually is an area down there. That retention pond has actually been moved. This drawing's a little bit old. It's actually just off of left field on the softball field. There's a retention pond we built just on this side of Gossett, on the other side, and we're using existing stormwater loop under Gossett. So there's no new pond going on that side at the present time. It could need to be expanded later in order to accommodate some of the other hardscape out there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
I'm Kathy McKinney with Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, and we're bond counsel to Anderson University. I just wanted to emphasize that these bonds are being issued by the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority, which is a state agency that was created in 1983, for the sole purpose of issuing bonds for colleges, hospitals, and other 501(c)(3) entities, as well as industrial projects. Those three classifications do qualify for tax-exempt bonds. The bonds are not issued by Anderson, the city of Anderson. They don't count against the debt limit of the city of Anderson. The city of Anderson has no obligation to pay these bonds back. They could not even pay them back if they wanted to because the bonds say they can be paid solely by the revenues of Anderson University. And they don't count towards the capacity of any type of financing at the city of Anderson. The reason you're asked to do this is because there's a state and federal requirement that there'd be a public hearing before the issuance of tax-exempt bonds for 501(c)(3) entities, colleges, hospitals, and also industrial facilities. With the idea that if a particular city or county did not want a project to occur in their jurisdiction, the state would get that feedback and be able to factor that into the decision-making. So that's the purpose for why you're holding the public hearing. And the other item is on your agenda, which is the support resolution. And again, the support resolution is supporting the issuance of the bonds by the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority for Anderson University, which is solely responsible for paying the bonds. They did put this out for bid among all the banks, and they got back several, a lot, of competitive proposals, and they've awarded the bonds to TD Bank, which is going to purchase the bonds for their own portfolio and hold in their own investments. So they were very happy with this credit. We, assuming that we've answered your questions tonight to your satisfaction, we hope to have these bonds issued the first week of December.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. Any questions of Ms. McKinney? Having listened to the presentation, do we have any public comments? Anyone that would like to come up and make comment? Okay, we'll move on to our meeting. The minutes of our October 27 meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Not hearing any. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes of October 27 passed unanimously. We have one item of new business, and that item is the request consideration of an ordinance to annex and zone to neighborhood commercial approximately 7.25 acres generally located at the northwestern corner of East Greenville Street and Reed Road. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, you referred this to the planning commission at your last meeting. It was unanimously approved by them on November 4th, and I think it's common knowledge that this is a Walmart neighborhood store. Construction has been underway for some time, as the original permits of this project were permitted in the county. Of course, they are requesting annexation at this time, and so we recommend this to you on first reading.
Thank you. Was there any other comment from the public during the first reading, in this reading? No?
I don't think you heard it.
You didn't hear?
You said there was no other comment from the public?
No.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chapman?
I just wanted, this area borders the area that I serve, and I've received no comments, positive or negative. And with that, I would make a recommendation we approve it on first reading.
Second.
First by Ms. Chapman, second by the mayor pro temp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the first reading. We'll move on to the first item of new business, and that would request consideration of a resolution in support of the issuance of the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority of its economic development revenue bonds for Anderson University. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, council, you've heard from Dane and Kathy. I have no further comments. This would be the resolution that Kathy's requested to support them moving forward with the issuance of the bonds.
I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Second.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Roberts, John Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that resolution passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to comment for Anderson College, Anderson University, that I really commend you for the fine work you're doing for this community.
Thank you. That's a great comment. Anything else, guys? All right, appreciate it. We have one more item of new business, and that is request consideration to purchase tasers for the police department. Mr. Moore?
Mayor, since Chief Stewart's here, I'll let him come down and tell you about the taser purchase and the low-bid or state contract for those, the grant. He can also stay and move the administrative briefing. We do have disclosure of another grant. I know he's proud that the city has obtained, so.
Yes, sir. This is basically a grant that we applied for. We applied for enough tasers for the entire department and the Uniform Patrol Division. The State Department of Public Safety did award us 21 holsters, 21 tasers, and batteries, all the equipment that goes with that. And this is a 90% grant from the state. We match it with 10% from our funds.
Thank you. Any questions, comments of the chief?
Just one.
Ms. Stewart?
Appreciate going after the grant and getting the tasers. I know at one point in time, we awarded tasers in the past. Are those tasers just out of date now? What's happening with them, the need for the new ones?
We do still have those tasers. The last grant we got in this amount was in 2008, which was for our entire Uniform Patrol Division. What this will allow us to do is to move more of those tasers. Basically, it's just not feasible to repair or replace.
Sure.
Some of those tasers, it costs as much to just buy a new one.
Sure.
The existing tasers that we will have from getting this purchase will put into detention, and it will go to protect the detention officers within.
Will all of our officers have tasers, or are we still lacking some?
We will still be lacking some, but we will apply for this same grant next year.
Okay, thank you.
Anything? Ms. Luckage?
What's the typical lifespan of a taser?
Depends on the use of the officer. Some are a little harder on equipment than others, but usually three to four years.
Longer than the taser.
I don't want to be a taser.
Any other comments, questions?
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Chapman. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you, chief. Administrative briefing?
Yes, sir. This is a very similar grant. It's from the Department of Public Safety. We've applied for this grant for several years. You may be familiar with the DUI grant we've had in the past here. This is very similar, though this one is just strictly for police traffic services. It will let us have two officers added to the department. It will provide all their equipment, all their office equipment that's required, and two patrol cars. It's a 100% grant. The city has nothing in this. As far as cost, it's something that we really need here in the city. These officers will strictly work 100% of their time on traffic enforcement and working some of the in-depth investigation skills, which we need, with evidence that this past weekend. And we'll be able to send some of these officers to some training more than what other officers get for some of the reconstruction.
Thank you, chief. Any questions, comments?
Just one question.
Ms. Stewart and Ms. Chapman?
Chief, I know this is on a grant, and we're hiring two officers. Do we expect after the grant runs out that these officers may be able to be retained through attrition, or what is the plans after the grant runs out for these officers?
This is a one-year grant, and next year, I expect the Department of Public Safety to give us a continuation grant on this. We will see that when it comes. If that time comes that we're not allowed, I'm going to fight. I want to keep those officers. But if not, we will maintain those officers through attrition.
Thank you. Chapman?
That was part of my question, but I guess with that, I commend you on seeking these grants, especially this being a 100% grant for basically $200,000. So commend you and your staff on that.
Ms. Luckage?
I think it's wonderful, too, that we have a 100% grant. That's quite unusual to have that. Are we going to use the officers that we have presently instead?
We will.
To man this first, or will we bring in new officers?
This grant actually has started October 1st, so Nick Crenshaw and Gene Frank have already assumed these positions, and will backfill their positions.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
Anything else, guys?
In that case, I move that we adopt this.
First by the mayor pro temp.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Chief, give us an example of something, an example of what these two guys will be doing.
They'll be doing strictly traffic enforcement all day. For the numerous complaints we receive on East Greenville Street, Whitehall, North Main, Chocolate Ferry, they'll be focusing on our main target areas.
Speed?
Yes, sir. Running red lights, fare-to-yield right-of-way, basically our major traffic complaints. And they'll also, like I said, be working on some of the accident reconstructions that provide a little bit more in-depth than just what we call a normal fender bender.
Good, thanks. All those in favor say aye.
There's really nothing to be in favor of.
Oh, that's right, the administrative.
I really shouldn't.
You moved up.
I moved up. It was such a good idea. I just thought, hey, we need to do this.
It's a grant. All right, what else we got? Upcoming events?
If you just take a look at your calendars, we are approaching the holiday season, and there are a number of things on there. But let me just mention and reiterate what Councilman Harbin says. Don't forget tomorrow, we'll be honoring Veterans Day, so I hope you'll keep those veterans in your thoughts and prayers. Wednesday, the Finance Committee will meet. I think you got it noticed today. They meet each year about this time to get a preview of the audit, and so they'll be meeting. You'll see the audit in the first meeting in December, but I would go ahead and give you a little, it's a very, very good audit again. I thank Peggy and her staff for the work they continue to do in financing. So not only is the good audit report on what they find, but financially, the city had a solid year. So that'll be Wednesday. We have a couple of other things we're going to look at. We're going to look at the budget amendment process and some amendments that are already in. And the other big thing, this council made a major decision to look at making sure the funding made this city sustainable for a long time. And you remember those eight things we looked at in the budget, they've all been implemented. And I'm pleased to say, in meeting with Peggy and her staff today, that they're all on target. So really good shape, and folks who got their tax doses will have noticed their tax decrease of seven mils. So everything's about what Peggy told us we would, and that puts us in a good position for recruiting and retaining employees, and also for capital equipment going forward, to remain the services that you expect. County Municipal Association, Williamson's hosting Thursday night, so a busy week. Next week, on the 18th, the Downtown and Recreation Combination Committee, so everybody can come. I think eight of the nine of you are on those. They'll be looking at the hospitality revenues and what projects are on those two lists, and then that joint group will be asked to prioritize those going forward for the next year. For the rest of December, we typically don't have a need for a second meeting this month. You typically have not had one, and that will lead up to the week of Thanksgiving, where we'll observe those holidays on Thursday and Friday. And if you look quickly at Wednesday, mark your calendar, we talked about this with some of the councilmembers who arrived early. It doesn't take long when you flip the calendar to December that you have the Christmas It doesn't take long when you flip the calendar of December that you have the Christmas tree lighting downtown on Friday, the 6th, and the Christmas parade, rain or shine, on the 7th. So also, there'll be only one meeting in December, and that'll be on the 8th. And please mark your calendar for the employee Christmas lunch on the 11th. And you can look on down for the others. Mr. Mayor, that's all we have in administrative briefing. We do have a short, we hope short, update from the municipal judge on some personnel matters in the executive session.
Thank you, sir. I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
It's a move.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by the mayor pro temp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand in the executive session. I would entertain a motion to come out of the executive session.
It's a move, Mayor.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by the mayor pro temp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand our executive session. In executive session, we heard the city judge, Judge Madison, give an update on the progress of the workings of the assistant city judges, and also the ministerial recorders, and how that process is going forward, and appears to be moving well at the time. We will, the judge and the city attorney also looking at other candidates in regards to ministerial recorders and their report back to us at that time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harbin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.